Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for June. Mr. Gentile, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. D'Amelio is not here yet. Mr. Oliva?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
And Mr. Holmes is on his way, and Mr. Wexler?
Here.
And tonight's opening prayers will be offered by Reverend Tim Johansson, Temple Lutheran. Thank you.
Let us pray. God, you give us a gift, and that is the gift of community, where we can come together and the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. We thank you for that opportunity. Nevertheless, being invested in one another presents all kinds of challenges, and we pray for your grace and your mercy as we tackle many of them. We pray for those struggling with addiction. In the midst of the heroin and opioid epidemic that is affecting so many lives in our township, we pray that you might move in our hearts to stop the stigma that surrounds addiction, that we might better care for those in need. Because of the revelation of a lot of instances of racism taking place in this township, Lord God, we pray that you would help us to do better in the way we interact, in our people, and in the systems we put in place. We beg your mercy wherever necessary, and we beg your guidance in all things. We thank you for our commissioners. Grant them wisdom and courage, especially as they meet and determine things that will care for us. God bless us to be a blessing for all those we meet. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
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 A pleasure, ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Chief, I'll ask you to come up and introduce. Our first item is a presentation by the Gloucester County Police Academy Director. If you'd like to introduce him.
Good evening. We're fortunate to have tonight with us Director of the Gloucester County Police Academy, which is just over the bridge in New Jersey. We often take advantage of the schools that they have over there. They have a very outstanding Police Academy in-service training program, which we have sent officers to numerous, numerous schools over there. It's a great bang for the buck. They're very reasonable schools, and it's a high-quality school. Recently, the reason why we're here tonight is we sent Sergeant Long to their supervisor school over there. It's a two-week school, which gives the sergeants newly-promoted sergeants training on how to make that transition from sergeant. So, take it over.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. On the way up, I Googled "Haverford," and it means a long way from Gloucester County, New Jersey. You see literal translations. But I'm happy to be here, and I'm very thankful the police department is utilizing our supervision school. Just so you know, we cover over 20 subjects in this school over a two-week period. We give two intensive exams on each Friday, inclusive of everything that everyone has learned, and we have 20 different instructors, including chiefs of police, chief of SEPTA. We have chiefs in the county. We go over everything for fit-for-duty, returning veterans, and in today's world, how to mitigate risk as a supervisor. So, these are big things that we cover. Over the two-week period, I got to know probably all the students in the class, and I have to tell you, you're Sergeant Thomas Long. If we could steal him to New Jersey, we will. He did a great job. He was plugged in all the time. When I gave classes and we went through different scenarios, I made them exceptionally difficult. And Tom was always there. He always had something good to contribute to the class, and after I saw that he had the highest overall average, I was very pleased. So, I'd like to read this. The Gloucester County Police Academy Police Supervision School Academic Award, presented to Sergeant Thomas Long of the Haverford Police Department for achieving the highest academic average in the Gloucester County Police Academy's Police Supervision School.
We kind of view Gloucester as one of those places you have to drive through to get to the shore, so. Sergeant Long, congratulations. Well-represented for a township. Our next item is a proclamation. Mr. Siegel? For Eagle Scout Charles Douglas Wolf. Always a pleasure. Mom and Dad can come up as well.
It always gives me pleasure to present a proclamation to an Eagle Scout, but this proclamation probably more so than most, because not only do I know the scout and his parents, but his entire family for decades. They're our neighbors. They're members of the community, very active, and we've known them for years. You're the second Eagle Scout. Your brother is actually my alma mater, went with my son. So, it's not your typical relationship where we come and we're just proud of people. I'm particularly proud of this, and I know your family is. The celebration that was at Bryn Mawr Presbyterian was amazing, to see how many people came out for you. And so, tonight, I'm here to formally present you with this proclamation, which I will read. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to applaud Charles Douglas Wolf of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 19, Bryn Mawr Presbyterian Church, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, for earning the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Charlie is currently a junior at Haverford High School and has participated in scouting programs for over 11 years, beginning as a Tiger Scout and advancing to the level of Eagle Scout. In addition to earning the rank of Eagle Scout, Charlie plays footsaw and ultimate frisbee, also participates in the Haverford High School Competition Band and other music groups. He's in the National Honor Society, and whereas for the past four years, he has attended Gratz Hebrew High School and will graduate with a Religious School Teaching Certificate in June 2019. Over the year, Charlie has volunteered his time in a variety of ways by supporting many Eagle Scout candidates in their projects, organizing and running fundraisers for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and pitch-in for baseball, as well as running bingo and cooking meals for homebound seniors. And whereas the path to Eagle Scout includes an extensive service project that the scout plans, organizes, leads, and manages. Charlie's project consisted of painting a storage shed, assembling picnic benches, creating a matching trash can, along with leveling and resurfacing a gaga pit to benefit congregation Beth El Nertamides Religious School and congregation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledges and congratulates you for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges, and in what I am told is the first time we've had foreign language on a proclamation, mazel tov. So, congratulations. 10th day of May 2018, the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, William Wexler, President. Good luck.
Thank you, David. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Shade Tree Commission.
Well, that's a hard act to follow.
That certainly is, I'll tell you.
So, thank you for having us here to address you. I'm here with some of my colleagues from the commission. So, the mission of the Shade Tree Commission, the purpose, is to advise the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager with respect to the preservation, maintenance, and planting of shade trees in the township. And we're here this evening to fulfill that mandate, to talk about some recent tree losses that we've experienced in the township, and to make some recommendations for 2019 as you consider the budget for 2019. But first off, I'd like to start off with some good news. Haverford Township recently was recognized again by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. So, we've had this status in the past, and now we are once again among the cities and towns nationally that are recognized as having core standards of sound urban forestry. So, what this means is this is a testament, really, to the commitment of Haverford Township to trees and the hard work and the partnership shown by township government, staff, volunteers, and residents. So, we can be proud of this accomplishment, and we're looking forward to the Shade Tree Commission to promoting this and letting people know about this in the coming months. So, now on to the bad news. We've lost a lot of trees in the township over the last 12 months, as you may well know. 430 trees, at least 430 trees were removed by PICO as part of systems upgrades since last September. The winter storms have done a lot of damage to our tree canopy. At least 60 trees were removed by the Township Tree Department for the storms, and many more were lost or removed by private homeowners. Emerald ash borers here, and we will be losing significant trees to this in the near future, and other bugs like spotted lanternfly are here, and we can expect them to do some damage to our tree canopy in the future. And this is all on top of the typical loss of 200 or so trees that are taken down by the tree department, dead, diseased, or dying trees, taken down to keep residents safe. So, on to some good news. So, the township, under Larry's direction, with the tree department and Tim Denny, we recently learned, are working with a tree company to evaluate ash trees in parks and on public property. As we learned, 60 trees are slated to be treated and saved this year, with performance assessed in advance of budgeting additional dollars in FY '19. So, we commend this proactive work and this decision to try to save some of our public ash trees. Other good news is we still have a continuing strong tree tenders program led by Jean Angel and a strong corps of volunteers. Annually, they plant about 100 community trees each spring and fall with volunteers, and the township pays for those trees that are planted by the tree tenders. However, this is not enough. Even in a good year, without other tree losses, the township is not replacing the number of trees it is taking down. In a bad year, like this past year, we are seeing major losses. So, the benefits of trees are many. I won't go into those right now. I'm sure you understand that. And we've seen with the public outcry over PICO tree removal, that township residents care a lot about their neighborhood trees. So, in this context, the Shade Tree Commission would like to make two, I'll spare you, two recommendations this evening. One of them is to consider a township-wide tree inventory, and two is to increase support for tree planting in 2019. So, to talk about the tree inventory, I'd like to invite Mark Pennington up.
Thanks, David. One of the things we found out as a committee, talking to local townships, Haverford College, is the idea of bringing in an arborist, and we would recommend that the commissioners consider talking to a professional consulting arborist about some type of tree plan, and there's all types of levels. Just like right now, we're looking at the ash trees, basically, it would be some level of looking at trees throughout the township, determining if we have liability trees out there on township property, right through to a 10-year management plan and everything in between. So, we would encourage the board to take the time to talk to consulting arborists, understand what they could bring to the township, and help the township manage trees, which, as we have seen, we're losing and can also be potentially a public liability. We have some names for a couple consulting arborists that have worked in local townships and at the college, and if the board would like to pursue that, you can just let us know, and we can get those to you, and probably get them to Jerry.
Thanks, Mark. Our second recommendation is to increase township support and financial investment in tree planting in 2019. With the recent tree losses and the prospect of losing trees at an increased rate in the future, the township needs to find ways to plant more community trees, both in public spaces and on private property, to keep Havertown green, healthy, and a desirable place to live. So, our first recommendation is to explore ways to support tree tenders and Jean Angel to provide administrative support for residential tree planting. This is a large administrative burden for her as the leader and coordinator of tree tenders, and we, as the main tree planting program for the township, we recommend that the township explore ways to support her with some staff support. We also recommend that for the 2019 budget, you strongly consider doubling the budget for new trees from $5,000 at its current level to $10,000. With $10,000, we estimate that we could plant at least 200 trees, 100 with the tree tenders group, and 100 more with other means. This would get us to the point where we are at least replanning the number of trees that we are typically taking down in any normal given year. Shade Tree can develop plans, where the best way to spend these additional dollars, and in consultation with tree tenders and with the township, to get the biggest bang for the buck. And we envision taking an active role in getting some or all of these trees planted. My ideas are tree giveaways at township events, tree giveaways that commissioners could offer to their residents in their wards, working more with civic associations to plant on public property and in parks. Additionally, the township public work staff could plant a certain number of trees in targeted areas, especially where larger trees are warranted. So, in conclusion, Shade Tree looks forward to working with the township and residents to increase tree planting in 2019 and to continue to protect and promote trees in Haverford Township. Thank you for your time.
David, thank you very much. We appreciate your input, and we'll make sure Larry gets, we'll discuss it and come back with you through Jerry and the Shade Tree Commission as well. So, thank you very much. Deputy Chief, are you going to give the crime update this month?
During the month of May, we had 27 criminal arrests for juvenile arrests, 164 traffic citations, 27 non-traffic citations, 109 warnings, and 498 parking tickets. We had one aggravated assault, which occurred at the high school involving a juvenile, which arrest was made. We've had eight burglaries within the township. Some are overnight businesses. Investigations are ongoing. We also had one in residence where a debit card was taken unlocked during the middle of night. We also had two burglaries reported at the same address on Belvedere that was cleared by arrest of a juvenile who was involved in that. During the time, we also had six thefts from autos carrying different parts of the township, the unlocked vehicles. They are still continuing, just a little information, people locked their cars. We'll be better off and cut down on those thefts. We had six sex offenses during the month. One of them was an incident involving the groper, which we made an arrest on, and we cleared many cases with that, going back for over a year. We also had a couple that were reported in through Children and Youth Services. One investigation's ongoing, and three are pending charges at the outcome of the investigations. And then, we also had 10 K-9 users for the month. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I had a question for...
Mr. Siegel?
At last month's meeting, a resident spoke about her house was burglarized, and she suggested that there was a correlation between burglaries and commuters parking and using the Route 100. Have you seen any correlation or relationship between commuter parking and home burglaries at all?
Not to my knowledge. In reference to that burglary that occurred, that was mentioned in last month's meeting, that was actually, it was just on the news this past week. That was a part of a ring that was sitting all three counties. We've had people coming out on the PNW and committed burglaries in the past. We've been able to make arrests in some of those cases, but I personally, I cannot make any comparison between commuter parking in a certain area in reference to a burglary. I think the only, excuse me, the only thing would be dumb for minority of the vehicles being in the area, but most people are parking in the residential neighborhoods, taking Route 100, or working folks trying to get to them from the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is Commissioner Committee updates. Any updates from any of the commissioners? There being none. Township auditor?
I have reviewed the township's expenditures and warrants for this month. I found no irregularities, and all my questions have been satisfactorily answered.
Thank you, Ms. Ren. Any questions for the auditor? Next is the Citizens' Forum, and we have registered speakers. There was three people from Hara. I do not believe they were able to attend tonight. The next one is Penelope Rigatos on disturbing traffic. If you'd please come up, state your name and your address.
Penelope Rigatos. My address is 1205 Bonner Road in Havertown.
Floor is yours for three minutes.
Thank you. So, the issue is multifold with disturbing traffic. I will start with the most serious, which is night deliveries. Night deliveries, we had several, but last week, we had one on Wednesday at 11:38 PM that woke me up and kept me up all night, and the next day, Thursday, it was 10:30, 10:27. They were both FedEx trucks. I follow up with my neighbor, who gets regular deliveries, and he is very diligent, and he follow up with FedEx, and he has a chat from a supervisor of FedEx that says night deliveries don't supposed to happen, and he will talk to that driver, and he apologized. I also have a voicemail that says exactly the same thing. My opinion and my neighbor's opinion is that FedEx is a very large company, so they will keep doing it. They will, instead of asking for permission, they will ask for forgiveness. I found that very disturbing, being a resident in Haverford, in Havertown for 10 years and in Haverford for 20 years, that I should have the right to peaceful sleep. So, that's the most critical issue. A lot of deliveries, most of them for FedEx, I understand that we live in the age of Amazon, but still, I have the right to sleep. A lot of them are from food trucks, giant, they deliver in the night. The other issue is I cannot get out of my driveway most of the times. There is a sign that says 15 mile and is handicapped. I was told many times by police, Sergeant Sandrosen specifically, that this sign is antiquated and it shouldn't be there. However, the case is that we do have a handicapped lady on the street that walks with her dog every day, at least once a day, and I personally seen her being pushed on the curb many times. And so, when I back off my driveway, which my house is right in the fork of Bonner and Fairview, I don't have the time to look left and right. By the time I look on the left and I'm clear, there is a car in the right. So, I'm always at risk of having an accident. So, I talked to Sergeant Sandrosen, and he said, I said, "What can you do for us?" And he said, "Well, it depends what the problem is. I have to assess for myself, and I can put officers there, I can put a sign." I said, "Well, I walk the neighborhood very regularly, and I saw a sign on West Gate Hills. Why can you put one like that?" He says, "Well, I don't have a lot. I have a few, but I will try. I haven't seen it yet." So, his statement was that the 15 mile per hour sign is very old, shouldn't be there, even though we have a handicapped person. I said, "Okay, put a 25, and let's reinforce that," because the drivers, especially in the summer, they're going at least 45 to 50 miles an hour. We have kids on the street. We have a lot of young kids. So, that's my issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Next is Jean Angel, Leonard Crossing Park.
Good evening. My first time in this glorious new building. It's beautiful. Much improved over the old area. I'm looking forward to the time when you have an open house, so we can see the rest of it, because it is great. I'm here to talk about videotaping or broadcasting and/or broadcasting meetings. I've spoken before the board before. I read online the agenda item tonight to record and broadcast the Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board, and I totally support that. And I have spoken before, based on my own experience, before the zoning hearing board during the Walgreens escapade. But I will let the people who are making the motion, seconding the motions, speak to their motion. I want to talk about history, and I want to talk about the longstanding reticence, recalcitrance, whatever you want to call it, to videotaping and/or broadcasting meetings in this town. 22, 23 years ago, there was a great group of women in the League of Women Voters who would come before the board, your predecessor board, and ask to have the meetings recorded and broadcast, and nothing happened. They would get up, and they would get up, and they would get up. I simultaneously was doing the same thing with the school board, asking them to record and broadcast the meetings for the community. Neither of us got very far. One day, the women of the League of Women Voters said that the new cable access group would offer to train groups of six people. They had five. Would I go in with them? If we received the training, we could take the big video camera and take it to any community meetings we wanted to. So, I said yes, and we were trained. The elderly ladies decided to continue to come before this board and ask nicely. I chose otherwise. I took that big video camera and for a year and a half, put it in the faces of the school board members, each and every meeting. It took a year and a half. Can you imagine a person sitting in the audience, recording all your meetings, and you didn't record them? You didn't have those tapes? You let it go on for a year and a half? They finally gave in and cried uncle and said, "Okay, our next meeting, we are going to record the meetings and broadcast them." Less than 48 hours, this board did the same thing. That is the kind of unhappy history of how meetings got to be broadcast in this town. I'm asking you to bust out of that mold. At the time, I went through and analyzed what was going on all across this county and Lower Merion. Everybody else was light-years ahead of us. Media Borough has been broadcasting its meetings live since the mid-'80s, where people can sit at home, watch the meeting. If there's an agenda item or an issue of importance, they come and they speak. They get off their butts and they come to the meeting. I would like you not only to support recording and broadcasting these meetings, I want you to consider broadcasting things live. Even my church livestreams the 10:30 mass on Sundays. It's time. It's time, and I wish you would please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. That concludes our registered speakers. The next portion is... The next portion is anyone in the meeting, anyone in attendance that wishes to speak on an agenda item that we're going to vote on this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an agenda item? One up, sir, please state your name and address for us.
My name is Paul Gauz. Live at 1004 Crest Road, and I'd like to address the issue of the parking restrictions on both sides of Crest Road, which is before the committee tonight for a vote. I was involved in the circulation of the petition for this, and unfortunately, I was unable to make last month's meeting, but I'm present now and I'd like to offer the comments. I'm aware of the proceedings of that meeting. And I think at the time that we circulated this petition up and down the area of Crest Road that we were concerned about, we had 100% of the residents of this individual section of the road who have experienced the inconvenience of illegal, improper, and unsafe parking to come forward and request this action. And it's, it's important that this action go through. The issue that came before that was addressed by Mr. Siegel, I'd like to comment on that because I live next door to the house that was burglarized. I was sitting in my basement, not 15 feet from the perpetrators of that crime, and as well, a young woman with a young child entered the house at the time that burglary was taking place.
Could you stay by the microphones so the people, if you want to away from the microphone?
And so I was in the house when that happened. And I'm also aware of the reports of the task force that were tracking those two burglaries that were finally, burglars that were apprehended. And believe it or not, they were tailing the car the evening of the accident, of the burglary, and they lost those individuals in the crowd. They slipped through the cracks because of the group and the parking that had been parked. They were traced to that neighborhood, identified as being in the neighborhood, and they lost them. So yes, and I would refer you to the task force, because that's where I got that information from. The other comments that I'd like to make is that I, I understand that there was some divergence of opinion about how best to settle this problem. There was disagreement and there was disapproval of our action based upon a desire to address the problem more universally throughout the township by restricting parking in that area to Havertown Township residents only. Well, believe me, I'm not going to feel any happier or better about having my vehicle, my driveway, and my parking, my handicap restricted parking place encroached upon or hindered because it's a fellow township resident. I'm not going to feel any better about it, and I doubt that any of my fellow neighbors who are here to support this action tonight would feel the same way. I call again for a widely applicable addressing the problem that we're dealing with, with commuter parking. And believe me, one of the situations is not to provide free parking for commuter parking to service the Pennfield, Brookline, or any of the other stops that may arise. I'm all in favor of mass transit. In my career in the Army, my lifetime career in the Army, I was stationed in places where we were heavily reliant, if not totally dependent, both at home and abroad, on systems of mass transit. There are certainly better ways of addressing the problem than providing free parking in community areas. Card share, ride sharing, car pooling, park and ride, even going to the point of having the SEPTA stops at the train stations to facilitate transportation. The other thing about this countywide, or this Havertown Township restriction, is you may not realize this, but in our neighborhood where we live, Wynwood Valley Park is adjacent, almost adjacent, to Powder Mill Park. As a Havertown Township resident, I would be able to park unrestricted at Lower Marion's Wynwood Valley Park, but those Lower Township Marion, Lower Marion Township folks, a stone's throw down the street, would not be able to park unrestricted at Powder Mill Park. So it's, it's, what does that solve? I, I ask you, when you're voting on this issue, we're asking for relief in this matter because there are real problems. And in voting this, what possible overriding compelling interests of any other party could displace our interest for the private enjoyment and the quiet enjoyment of our properties? Thank you for consideration of this, and I appreciate your support.
Mr. Gauz, thank you very much for... Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on any agenda item? Yes, sir. Come on.
Everybody. I know some of you guys. Adam Tarnova, 1006 Crest Road. I live next door to Paul. You know, just to kind of reiterate what he was talking about, and in my own mind, to keep it focused. I live three houses away from the border. The people that are parking on the street, they're not, you know, I find, I find a high majority of them coming down the road, right out of Lower Marion. It's not a, it's not a Havertown, Lower Marion thing. That's just where the people are. The story I want to tell is a little bit more about, you know, kind of just ask a couple rhetorical questions. I mean, we've had, I have a seven-year-old boy and a four-year-old girl. About a year ago, we called the police several times, because we would have large trucks, construction kind of trucks, stay, park out front of our house, and stay there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. White vans without, you know, I'm really stereotyping here, but this is the honestly odd stuff of what happened. Freaks my wife out, you know, and it's just one of those things. There is a bigger issue, and that's the parking. I've lived in London, I've lived in DC, and I've been very reliant on public transportation. I'm a big fan of it. You know, and I, this is not a ploy against public transportation. I ask that you pass the, pass it for the Crest Road, but you really need to look into how are, how is the township going to push SEPTA? How are we going to manage people that are going to be taking public transportation? You know, we are a bedroom community, and it, you know, more people are moving, you know, commuting into the city. It's easy, it's so easy taking a Route 100 into the, right into the city. So again, I just ask that you pass this for the Crest Road, but really make it a priority. Think about how the Route 100 is going to affect, and the public parking for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Is there anyone else? That being the case, that will close the Citizens Forum. Thank you, gentlemen, on the Crest Road. We'll go in reverse order, I guess. We, we do have, we will have a discussion, I assume, on that agenda item when it comes, and we are, I know Commissioner Hart and several other commissioners are looking at working with SEPTA on public transportation parking lots. We're identifying, we're in the process of identifying land near each of the stations that we could either acquire or convert to parking with minimal impact on the neighborhoods. And no matter what we do, we know we're going to run into what's good for the one side of the street, somebody on the other side of the street's not going to want to look at a parking lot, so it's going to be, it's going to be a delicate balance, but we intend to take it on over the next several months to look at it and come up with some solutions for the public to give us their input on and then vote on, so. Go back. We are going to vote, and we will discuss, Ms. Pfeiffer, on the taping of those. I, I personally agree with you. I think any meeting that we have that's open to the public should be available to the public. You're right, the technology is there. Other townships do, there is live. So the technology has improved. We've, we've increased our technological advances with this building. We have, as you look around here, there's many cameras. People are facing us, but we can also see presentations on the screens behind us, so we've, we've, we've come into some advanced audiovisual stuff. We still have some issues to solve since we, we have two different formats for two different cable companies. Verizon does things formatted one way, and Comcast does it another for those public access channels, so we don't quite have the capability to do it live yet, because we'd have to have two different setups to do that, so we're kind of waiting on there and hoping for some grant money to get that equipment, and the Cable Board's looking at that, and will over the next few months to do that. We hope to be able to do that, or at least come up with the technology to at least consider doing those things in the future. But we'll have a discussion. I don't want to speak for anybody else on the, on the voting items tonight, but we will look at that this evening.
Mr. President, it is worth noting, I believe our, I believe our meetings are usually put on YouTube by tomorrow morning, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so while it's not instantaneous, it is much better than the old, you know, couple loops that went through our...
Yeah, for those that don't know, we, in addition to the cable access channel, we have a YouTube channel. So it's, it's available on demand on the YouTube channel for those that are interested. Always surprises me. I'll be in the Giant, the Acme, or the Shoprite down at the Drexel Line, and people will come up and say, I saw, people watch it. It's, it's, I don't really think of myself as being a TV star, my kids certainly don't, but people do, they skip through it. I find myself looking at the school board one, you know, I'll admit I don't look at the whole hour and a half, but I flip through it and look at, try and catch topics to do there. So it's an important medium, especially for those that can't get to our meetings. So I think you make a good point there. Ms. Regos, we will look at the traffic. I will, Deputy Chief Hagan is here. He'll talk to Sergeant Bedrosian. We'll adjust the signs. We are correct that you can enforce 15 miles an hour in the township, the minimum enforceable speed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is 25 miles an hour, except in a school zone. So we will update the signs on that street so that they are enforceable at that point, and we'll monitor truck traffic. You're, I'm very familiar with Bonner Road. It's, I'm hard to believe that a giant truck would go down there, except maybe the Peapod delivery, but not a, not a tractor trailer. The only other deliveries for foodstuffs would be to the park system down there for the Little League, the soda deliveries and those things, but they, they should be done during work hours and not at night, so we will investigate that, and we'll try and coordinate with FedEx. If they have said that they're not going to make night deliveries, I'll take them at face value until the next one happens, and then we'll go, we'll have the police investigate that, so. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Item number eight is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 14, 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. Oliva. Any questions, additions, corrections? There being none, please call the roll.
D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Item nine is the approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move, we have, I move that we approve warrant number six of 2018 totaling $4,437,461.96, comprising the General and Sewer Fund payroll from May 17 of 2018 in the amount of $660,280.05. General and Sewer Fund payroll from May 31, 2018 in the amount of $698,740.14. General Fund dispersments number six of 2018 in the amount of $710,686.81. Sewer Fund dispersment number six of 2018 in the amount of $215,156.83. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment number six of 2018 in the amount of $99,779.83. Capital Project Fund dispersment number six of 2018 in the amount of $173,219.78. Debt service for the 2016, interest only, in the amount of $127,391.25. Debt service for the 2010 series, interest and principal, in the amount of $1,738,631.25. And a credit card statement ending May 27 of 2018 in the amount of $13,576.02.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGarrett.
Mr. President, our township auditor has gone through these warrants. Any questions that he has raised have been answered to his satisfaction by the township personnel. It's his recommendation these warrants be approved. It's my recommendation as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Stepped up.
Stepped up. Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Item 10 is the approval of the draft CDBG action plan for funding for 2018.
Motion to approve draft CDBG action plan for funding for 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions or any explanation needed? There being none, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
And Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Item number 11.
Mr. Hart.
I doubt the second reading of ordinance number P-10, 2018, authorizing the installation of traffic restrictions on the following highways. Sticker parking only, Crest Road, both sides, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Monday through Friday. Special purposes parking zones in front of 2545 Rosemont Avenue, Ardmore, PA. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Columbus Avenue, South Side, 60 feet east from the southwest corner by 101 Columbus Avenue.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. McGarrett. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, last month I voted no to this ordinance. I admit I'm going to vote yes to this ordinance this month. It'll be the second reading, and assuming a lot of votes don't change, it will obviously pass as it did last month. I remain concerned about what we're doing in terms of commuter parking and how it's being handled. I have, I have the concerns that Commissioner Siegel had last month, and that is that in this forum, in this public forum, I am concerned about people getting the wrong impression or getting bad information from these meetings. A number of the things that the people in Crest Road are concerned about are legitimate concerns, and they're legitimate concerns all through this township. Anybody who has their handicapped parking space blocked should call the police immediately, 911. The police want those calls. They come to the house, that car will be ticketed. If trucks are blocking streets that are too small for those trucks, we can deal with truck restrictions on individual small streets. We cannot give people the impression that commuter parking is creating a dangerous situation for people in our homes. That isn't so, and it is important that that be addressed. Now, if people are parking in neighborhoods, and therefore people don't recognize the cars and don't know who they are, and they are concerned, they can always call the police, and the police can answer those questions. So we need to come up with a better solution. In the meanwhile, block by block, we continue to restrict parking, and it is a problem for commuters. It's a problem for every township, not just Havertown Township. And one of the things I tried to address last month was the notion that we at least ought to try to do something for the commuters in Havertown who must drive to a commuter parking space and be able to park. But as it is, we're doing sticker parking only in Crest Road. I will support that. But it is, it has to stop. We have to come up with a better way to address this, or these no-parking areas will just grow and grow around the, the, the individual stops until you find that equilibrium where people are no longer willing to walk that far to the train station, and then mass transit will suffer as a consequence, and we will all suffer as a society. So I just think it's really important that the record be clear about what the real dangers are that are out there, and that nobody get the wrong impression that any of the commissioners that were against this ordinance were against this ordinance because they didn't care, or they were insensitive to the concerns about the neighbors. We have laws that can address almost all of the issues that people have in neighborhoods similar to Crest Road, and I encourage people to tell the police when those laws are being, are being flouted or are, are being ignored. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number 12, ordinance P-11, 2018. Mr. Hart. Dr. Hart.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-11, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960 as amended and known as the general laws of the township of Havreford, further amending Chapter 165 Taxation, Article 6, property tax credit to qualifying volunteers of Bonner, Brookline, Lanark, Manoa, and Oakmont Fire Companies.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I just want to say, I can't thank this board enough for doing at least this tax credit. These volunteers are, as you know, Bill, being a firefighter, how dedicated these volunteers are. And this is just a little something that we can do to try to help their bravery and their dedication to our township. So I want to thank the board for that. Many of the firefighters I've spoken with at Manoa are very grateful, so they had asked me to pass on their thanks to the board.
Thank you. Is there another comment down here? I think universally, all the fire departments have offered their thanks to the board and to the township for this. Every company is grateful for anything that they get, and it's actually not very much, but it's a good step for our volunteers. Saves us, having volunteer fire departments right now saves us millions of dollars annually if we had to have a paid fire department. I don't know what it would cost. I know Upper Darby, which is larger than us, pays about $17 million a year for full-time fire departments. So we're a little bit smaller, but you can see the scale of that would be huge and would be a great tax burden, an increase in taxes. So thank you to the township. As a volunteer fireman myself, I thank you, and I'll go there. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. And Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 13, ordinance P-12, 2018.
Okay. McGarrett. Hold on just for a second here. All right. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-12, 2018, authorizing restrictions on the following highways. The one here is a mistake. It says rescind from Havreford Township ordinance 17599 Schedule 24, sticker parking only on Cathmere Road, both sides. It shouldn't be that. It should be all of Cathmere Road, except for the roads, the homes between Alston Road and the other Alston Road. It's about 12 homes, but they've had signs up for the last three years for that. But all the others should be rescinded because they're not really on the books and they didn't find anything there. And also establish sticker parking only on the 100 block of Cathmere Road on school days, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., valid parking exempt. Also, what I was saying, the Alston Road to Alston Road. There are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00. And the reason the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 is so library people can come on Strathmere and Cathmere and park there after 10 o'clock to go to the library.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
I do not have this motion in my packet. I can't find it. Don't know, I haven't seen the text of it. I don't know if others are in the same situation, but.
It was in the one last week.
Comfortable voting on something that was omitted from materials.
My computer just died, so.
Well, that's been. You have it in your bag?
I'm looking right now.
I've looked through mine, but my computer just froze, so. That's why I keep a paper copy.
I'll look it right now.
Just had mine freeze, and I had to get it.
I don't have it either.
No. It wouldn't be, it's the signature. Actually, it really froze. Now I got a blue screen, so that's not good.
Well, I don't have a problem with the ordinance itself. I would like to actually have seen it. That's my concern.
Okay. It is not on there. We can.
Well, okay. I mean, this requires two readings, right? It's, it was on our agenda last week for the working session, wasn't it?
It was. Yes, it was.
I don't believe it was in the materials.
No, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Siegel. I guess I would suggest in this one, since it's parking, and frankly, that's, I imagine, I don't mean to speak for you, but I imagine that your concern about that ordinance would be, you know, to be sure it's written correctly and identifies the area right, but since it has to be done twice, and since we can basically craft the ordinance around the motion that we make this evening, can we just specify the ordinance as everybody understood it from last week at the work session, and then, you know, make sure everybody sees the ordinance before it passes for the second time? It's something we're aware of. It's something that was in our work session last month, or last week. And I can't believe I'm about to say this, but frankly, parking restrictions are fairly non-controversial, except every now and then. So might I suggest that we pass it without the ordinance, knowing it's not effective till there's a second one, and we just make sure that the written ordinance reflects exactly what we're describing tonight, and reflects what was published to the world in our work session agenda and tonight's agenda.
Can I further that suggestion? I think when you look at the ordinances, most of our sticker parking is essentially the same language, and it just changes the numbers in the streets. And we just passed the sticker parking only for Crest Road, so I assume when we have that copy, it'll still have Section 4, you know, upon effective date of this ordinance, highway department shall install appropriate signs and everything. The only thing that'll be changed will be Section 1, sticker parking only. And it would live Cathmere Road, both sides, the 100 block, and then Alston to Alston, as Commissioner McGarrett pointed out.
I have no problem with that.
So that would be the language of it. It just would need to be typed up for.
I doubt that we will substantively change the ordinance until now, next month. I would think that this would be allowable, Mr. Solicitor.
Yeah, as long as it's not substantively changed.
Right.
I mean, I think if we all take a look at that language, which is on page 116 of our packet, and just instead of Section 1, where it says Crest Road, just have Cathmere Road, both sides, the 100 block, and then Alston to Alston, school days, 7:00 to 10:00 a.m.
And that would be what the substance of it is. So we've essentially now read the content of the material into the record tonight.
I think it's self-explanatory. You can move on.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a substantive change, so.
It's the first reading, too.
It's the first reading.
Go forward.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Yes.
It's, Mr. D'Amelio said yes.
Mr. Oliva.
No way.
Yes. Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 14 is Resolution 2093, 2018. Mr. Oliva, thank you.
I do resolution number 2093, 2018. Motion to adopt resolution number 2093, 2018, authorizing the township manager for file application for county aid for 2018 pothole restoration in the amount of $25,164. And that should be to file, not for file.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions? You want to explain, Mr. Gentile?
Certainly. This, the county has received additional funds from the Commonwealth that they're making available to local communities to help us fund some of our winter road restoration programs. These funds will be used on township roads. Obviously, all the potholes have been repaired that have been reported to the township, so this will actually help go back into balance our budget for some of the expenditures to make those wintertime repairs.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 15.
Mr. President.
Dr. Hart.
A motion to adopt resolution number 2094, 2018, that Havreford Township hereby requests a multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $503,302 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for a proposed park and ride facility and pedestrian improvements along Caracan Drive between Mill Road and Beechwood Drive, and that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Lawrence J. Gentile, Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGarrett. Quick draw. Any questions?
So this is a first step in trying to help solve the parking problems we're having. It's certainly just a first step, but hopefully it will alleviate some of the congestion.
Is there, just what Jerry was just talking about, is there any chance we could get the young lady from SEPTA who came here and made a presentation about running to the King of Prussia Mall, so we could get, actually find out what properties SEPTA actually own? Because we don't know that. They might be able to give us ideas of more parking on their properties.
Yeah, we, Mr. McGarrett, probably wouldn't be that lady who came. She's a different division, but Mr. Faulkner and I deal with the SEPTA's engineering department on a regular basis. In fact, we worked on this, Mr. Faulkner, what did we say, about three years ago, three, four years ago?
Second, 2014.
2014. And so we're not recreating the wheel. The problem was funding it. The good news is that Mrs. Lydia, Lydia's last name?
Lydia Cruz.
Cruz, from SEPTA, is getting us an updated letter, giving us authorization to use the property right there at Caracan and Mill. So now what this multimodal grant would be is to help us fund and build the sufficient parking there, the proper right-of-ways, make bike-share parking. So we feel good about the grant application. What we will do is, once we move forward with Lydia, we can get Lydia or she can get a proper person for SEPTA to go over any other particular areas that may be workable to help us with that area.
Okay, Larry, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number 16, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2095, 2018, authorizing the township manager to take all steps necessary to record the meetings of the Havreford Township Zoning Hearing Board for rebroadcast on the Havreford Township cable channels in a fiscally responsible manner.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
I think residents know that I have been seeking for my entire time on the board to broadcast as many township meetings as is possible. I think it is important for residents. I believe that the two most important bodies of this township that should be broadcast in addition to this board are the zoning hearing board and the planning commission because both have a significant effect on residents. I receive more inquiries about those boards and requests to broadcast them as any other, and the zoning hearing board in particular because of the sometimes controversial issues that come before them. They are, as we have heard many times, a quasi-judicial board, and their determinations affect residents in many ways, whether it is a residential change or a commercial matter. Doing so is consistent with our authority to broadcast any meetings. The meetings of the zoning board, as our solicitor have explained, are public meetings. Anyone can walk in and with a camera, with a phone, record those meetings. And in this resolution, I am asking the board to authorize the township manager to do so what we call in a fiscally responsible manner, which means to establish a funding source, which even if the zoning board wants their meetings televised, we have to come up with the funds in order to do so because there is an expense to have someone here to do so. This ordinance, this resolution, authorizes the township manager to do so, and it's my understanding that he would be revising some of the permit fees, et cetera. I also want to address something else that has been, to say the least, disquieting to me for some time, but that in preparation for tonight's vote, I have done additional research. The zoning board is a quasi-judicial board that is subject to the Sunshine Act, which means that its proceedings are public. That means that it has specific requirements under the Sunshine Act that it must follow. In reviewing the Sunshine Act, including statements from the governor's office that address it, actually from 2015, so it was the prior governor, they talk about how all of these meetings are public and they have certain requirements. I am extraordinarily concerned at how the zoning board is conducting its business, and since we appoint them, but we do not have the authority to control how they operate, I want to point out that it is, that they need, that there needs to be change. And I mean that in the sense of their proceedings. Since January of 2017, the zoning hearing board has had 27 meetings. Of those 27 meetings, only seven meetings have minutes that are posted on the township website or are publicly available, which means that 74% of their meetings, we do not have minutes. As we have discussed on this board many times, it is a requirement under the Sunshine Act that all of our committees have agendas and minutes. The zoning board, according to the township website, which, consistent with the Sunshine Act, would be the location where all of these items are placed, has posted agendas as opposed to notices of meeting, and I'll explain the difference in a moment, in 20 of the 28 meetings that have been scheduled since January of 2017. That means in eight instances, residents who wanted to know what is on the agenda cannot find that information out. The agendas are required under the Sunshine Act to be posted in a sufficient time for residents or anyone interested to understand and learn of the proceedings. In May, there was a hearing before the zoning hearing board affecting my ward. While I did not plan on attending, I had been trying to follow the events because it had been somewhat controversial within the ward. The only item posted on the township website, and this has happened in eight occasions since last January, was the notice. The notices of meetings specifically state that this only reflects new cases, which meant that no one had the ability to know that that item was on the agenda unless they were informed in other ways. We need to make certain, whether it is through our solicitor communicating with the zoning hearing board, or whether it is through other means, that they must comply with the Sunshine Act. This is not a township requirement. This is a Pennsylvania state requirement. And I have consistently been complaining about the need for all of our boards to do so. The reason I point to the zoning hearing board is because we are voting on it. The reason I point to the Zoning Hearing Board is because we are voting on it. And as Commissioner Holmes said last night, televising sheds light on meetings. And while I believe that it is important to vote, I believe it is equally, if not more important, that we make certain that all of the boards that we appoint and that operate within this township comply with all state laws, all regulations. And to me, there is no law more important to the residents and to anyone interested in their proceedings than the Sunshine Act.
Mr. President. If I could just clarify so that people aren't confused, I didn't say that last night. I said it last week after work session. Sorry. And I do, I have, Dan and I have been at odds in the past about how, you know, strong or deferential we're going to be to the zoning board. I do not believe that this resolution does any violence to the independence of the zoning board or its status as a quasi judicial body that makes decisions that ultimately the township has to choose to take a position in or not. I think it is instead the exercise of leadership that I think people look to this board for. And it has been an issue for Commissioner Siegel for some time, who's paid much closer attention, I think, to transparency and other issues in the township than maybe I have or others on the board. So while in the past I have, I have not been in favor of differently worded resolutions, I think this resolution does what it should do, which is to state on behalf of the residents of Havreford Township that is the expectation of this board that the zoning board will enter the twenty-first century and enjoy our twenty-first century setting here and obey all the provisions in the Sunshine Act and make their things available to everybody. So I support this resolution. I do recognize that the zoning board has responded to our conversations last week by letting the board know that it is interested in televising and has, wants to address issues that it has raised and has concerns about, and those are issues that should be raised. But I don't believe that's any reason for this board not to continue to act in the way that it indicated one week ago that it would, and that's why I support this resolution.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis.
First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pfeiffer for spending a year and a half of your life to taking of the school board meetings, with taking of the commissioners meeting. So thank you for your efforts. I'm one that believes that everything should be transparent. I believe the zoning hearing board should be televised as well as the planning commission. Shade Tree Commission wants to be televised, so be it. But I just want to address a couple of comments made by Commissioner Siegel. In terms of the agenda and the minutes, my understanding is that, much like President Wexler, he doesn't, he's not responsible for posting the minutes in the agenda. That is an administrative thing that has to be done by the township. That's not the responsibility of the president of the zoning hearing board to post the agenda and post the minutes. So I think, from what I understand, that they, they thought they were being posted when they were not. So there's some miscommunication here that's got to be worked out. As Commissioner Holmes said, we did receive a letter dated June eighth from the zoning hearing board, and I'm going to read this into the record. It's addressed to the Board of Commissioners. It says, "With the opening of the new township building, together with its enhanced AV capabilities, the zoning hearing board respectfully requests that the township televise its hearings. Of course, the status of the board as a quasi judicial entity brings with it some challenges and considerations that should be addressed prior to the commencement of televising board hearings, including, but not limited to, the following." Bullet point number one, the board needs a private caucus space to seek counsel. Unfortunately, the partitioned section of the meeting room is not soundproofed, and therefore we respectfully request the use of a private room. Number two, number two bullet, the zoning application form should be revised to provide enhanced notification to applicants that their presentations will be televised and that certain legally protected health information will, may be televised. Much of the testimony we receive involves a hardship necessary under Commonwealth law to grant a zoning variance. These hardships often involve discussions of individual physical and mental disabilities, frequently involving minors and elderly relatives, many of which are significant. We would also, bullet point number three, we would also suggest that the zoning applications for forms remind residents that, number one, they will have to testify under oath. Number two, any materials they wish to submit into the evidentiary record should be properly marked as evidentiary exhibits. Number three, once a decision has been rendered by the board, that case is closed. Number four, based on the type of relief requested, e.g., variances, special exception, there will be different burdens of proof, which the applicant must adequately demonstrate in order to be granted the relief being sought. Residents who choose to present their case without the benefit of counsel, which is often the case, that's my comment, are usually unaware of all these important considerations. Bullet point number four, an AV technician will need to be on site to pause the recording as needed. As you know, televising of zoning hearings is not mandated by Pennsylvania law, rather a stenographic record of all hearings must be kept. However, in the interest of public access, the board feels the efforts should be made to televise our hearings. Accordingly, this board believes that a dialogue should take place promptly between the solicitor of the board and the township solicitor in order to properly address the above considerations and other legal concerns. The board also feels very strongly that a township zoning official should be present at every board, board hearing and formally present to the board and into the evidentiary record the basis of any township denials, as this is germane to a full and fair hearing on the merits of the applications and will result in a balanced evidentiary record on appeals. This is an important procedural step taken by our neighboring municipalities. As always, the interests of the residents of the township are paramount, so on behalf of the board, I'm writing to request that you authorize the township solicitor to contact Mr. Malone so that we continue a productive and collaborative move into the new facility in a manner that protects the interests of our residents and the integrity of the township and zoning hearing board, very truly yours, Robert W. Kane, Chairman, Zoning Hearing Board of the Township of Havreford. So I think it's not just simply a matter of passing a resolution, as Commissioner Siegel referred to, we have to talk about how we're going to pay for this additional cost. We've got to talk about staffing issues. There are other legal issues. I'm not an attorney.
Which room?
There's a lot of, a number of details that need to be worked out, and my suggestion would be that we have our solicitor, work directly with solicitor of the zoning hearing board immediately, try to, and with, I'm sorry, with Larry Gentile. Also, I think it's critical that he be part of it, figure out the cost structure, who's going to pay for it, how we're going to staff it, all the details be worked out, and come back to us with a recommendation. But the board itself is more than willing and has agreed to televise their meetings, and so this resolution, although I will support the next resolution, which requires the planning commission to televise their meetings, this resolution is really, is really moot. And so therefore, I would recommend that we, I would, I would move that we table this resolution.
Second.
Motion on the floor to table. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No. Motion to table carries, five to four.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
It's to be placed on the agenda next month.
It will be so placed. Item seventeen.
I'm not done.
Seventeen. You got it?
Sure. Same issues, different result. Motion to adopt resolution number two thousand ninety-six, two thousand eighteen, authorizing the township manager to take all steps necessary to record the meetings of the Havreford Township Planning Commission for rebroadcast on the Havreford Township cable channels in a fiscally responsible manner.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Well, I've made my points before about why I believe we should be televising zoning and planning commission meetings. I think this resolution provides an excellent opportunity for residents to understand how the planning commission operates and some of the issues that are raised generally. The planning commission operates, in my opinion, in as professional a manner as any board in this township. They regularly have detailed agendas, detailed minutes that go into explanations. They comply with the Sunshine Act and even specify who voted for and against a motion, which is not the case with the zoning board. Of the eight minutes that they did post, two were fatally flawed under the zone, under the Sunshine Act. Similarly, the planning commission places notice on their agendas of what will occur at the meeting. We've just heard, for example, that the zoning board has agreed or acquiesced, is the better term I prefer, to our request to televise meetings, even though what we do is independent of them. They have never placed this issue on their agenda. It is not on minutes. There is no indication whatsoever that it was discussed at a public meeting, and therefore the statements that are made, I do not believe have any further validity than any statement by any other member of that board. And it shows the difference between how the planning commission operates, and the planning commission has regularly said that they have no objection to doing this, and I applaud them for it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Did the, did the planning commission send a letter in to us also?
No.
No?
No, there was no letter.
Okay, thank you.
They were polled, though, right? Yeah. Or there was no objection?
The planning commission.
Yeah, I guess.
Our staff liaison said that they have no objections.
My only concern, I'm sorry, Mary.
I just wanted to say that planning commission is, is not a quasi judicial board, and we can tell them, and I think we should require them, or, you know, if, if there is concerns by the public to want to see these meetings, then we should do it. It is well within the township managers, you know, within the discretion that we give them to spend the money already. We don't have to give them, I mean, if they're spending more than eighteen thousand dollars a month for, you know, twelve months' worth of meetings, once a month, I think that we got to look at that, too. But I don't think we need to, to tell them. I think that we can, our manager has the authority to start televising those meetings. I think the Board of Commissioner, Board of Commissioners needs to pass this resolution for the planning commission. I think we just put the cameras up and start filming.
Well, I think the resolution, as I read it, is to authorize the expenditure on, so our township manager can spend the funds.
Township manager's already authorized to spend up to twenty thousand. Am I correct, Amy?
As long as it's budgeted, and this is.
But you're referring to the public bid requirements. I think he can do ten thousand without board approval or consideration.
Okay, so ten thousand dollars. I don't think that'll be, we'll be even close to that.
Let me, let me ask a question. Commissioner Tilly, would you feel more comfortable with the board's authorization to make that expenditure, or do you want to do it on your own? Would you?
It doesn't make a difference to me, and we're going to make it work. We will make the necessary changes on administrative level to address the fee schedule, to address the expenditures. It's not going to be a significant expenditure for the, for me to begin filming the zoning board and the planning.
Just going to be more of a staffing issue, right? I mean, you can't, just more of a staffing issue.
Yeah, we're working on compiling a job description and getting some in, some staff in to do the training. It's very technical. It's not like the old camera equipment. And then there's security issues that I have to be concerned with. So I feel comfortable that by August, September, the latest, we should have everything ready to go.
For both boards, or?
Yes.
For both boards? Up and operational?
Certainly.
I just want to add that whether we're up and operational by August or September, my, my understanding of Mr. Kane's letter and my expectation is that there is action taken by the zoning board at their next meeting. I mean, part of, I don't want to allow my vote on the motion to table to confuse the fact that I don't agree with Commissioner Siegel, and in fact, I do. But a letter was received on Friday from the board, and I do not have the history that many on this board have in that area, because I have not been on the board for as long, and I'm willing to take it at its word. But my expectation is whether we're up and running in June or July or next April, that the zoning board take a, action, taking a proactive step based on that letter, and whatever needs to be taken care of is taken care of before the July meeting.
I think that's a very reasonable request.
I agree with, with that. I think we should, I think it should be on the, I mean, it's a moot point because Commissioner Siegel's already asked for it to be on the agenda, but if that is the case, and they wouldn't pass something in their meeting, in their next meeting, then I would, I would vote against that, or I would vote for it.
They would have two meetings this month anyway.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I think what's in front of us right now is a resolution about the planning commission, and I obviously support it, and there's no reason for us not to pass that because there's only a couple of ways we, as a board, act. We pass ordinances, and we don't need to pass an ordinance suggesting that this be televised, or we pass resolutions. And frankly, I've sat through resolutions where we declare it National Scuba Diving Month. Why we're having a debate about whether or not we're going to pass a resolution, especially the one before us on planning commission, is really silly. With regard to a June eight letter of two thousand seventeen, I will remind everybody I had a very public and very ugly fight with Commissioner Siegel four years ago about whether or not this board should be inserting itself into the zoning board and how they run their meetings. And four years ago, that fight was over, whether the zoning board would simply do what the right thing to do was. So four years later, it comes up again from Commissioner Siegel, and miraculously, four days later, we get a letter from the president of the zoning board, who I will note is not here tonight, and sent nobody from the zoning board here tonight to read this letter or explain some of these things in this letter that aren't necessary. So I don't, this notion that we don't have to act now because they've seen the light, I don't, what did John Blake say in Dark Knight Rises? I'm a detective, I don't believe in coincidences. It is only action of this board that's going to make other people act and make the zoning board act here. So I am disappointed in the table vote before, but I certainly hope we're going to pass unanimously, and I zero a resolution that applauds the planning commission for how they've conducted themselves, and applauds them for planning to start televising their meetings.
My point, my, my point, Commissioner Holmes, is not that, not that they don't do it, it's the exact opposite. They have the authority to do that right now. We have the authority, our, our manager has that authority right now to, to expend, to make the expenditures to do that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't say yes to this resolution. I will be voting for this resolution. I'm saying that we should already start doing some of these things. This shouldn't be coming in front of the Board of Commissioners, commissioners, this should be administrative, or, you know, if we want to start broadcasting the Shade Tree Commission, well, that shouldn't have to come in front of us. They should be, hey, the Shade Tree Commission wants to broadcast their meetings, the manager should make that decision. That's my point.
Sure, I understand that, but if we, but if we do it here, if we do it in the form of resolutions, if, maybe we don't have to do any more resolutions, but none of this happened but for Mr. Siegel pushing this issue years ago, and then re-pushing this issue last week. So I, it'd be great, but at the same time, I mean, it's also how we communicate to our, to our citizens is at this meeting. This is where most people interact with us. And if they see us directing people to more transparency and conducting our businesses more transparently and heralding it in resolutions, I think it's just all positive. I think it's positive for the citizens. I think it's a positive action by us. So I'm glad you're going to vote for the resolution, Commissioner Oliva. I'm going to, too. I hope we all do, and.
Yep, the only comment, additional comment. Are you finished, Commissioner Holmes?
When my voice goes down, that means I'm done, but I'm done now.
You sure?
You can always come back. I mean, the only thing I would say, I, I disagree with how this was handled by this board on both resolutions. I think the appropriate approach should have been as a courtesy, would have been for the president of the board or a delegation from this board, go to the planning commission, go to the zoning hearing board, have a discussion about this topic, on how strongly we feel about it, get their input. After all, these are volunteers that put twenty, thirty hours a week, a month in at least without compensation. I think we owed them the courtesy of that meeting, which we didn't do, so. I have spoken to members of the zoning board. I think it was mishandled completely. I think we owed them that courtesy. So that's my, I'm going to vote for this resolution, but I think, I think we, we shouldn't have polled them, we should have gone to talk to them directly, and had we talked to them six months or a year ago, we would have gotten the results six months or a year ago. We didn't do that. So now we're trying to, you know, jam it down their throats. We should have, we should have gone directly to them and had a meeting. So that's my, that's my beef. I'm for it. I'm totally a hundred percent for televising every meeting, including the Shade Tree Commission, for going live with our meetings, for complete transparency, but I think we totally mishandled this whole situation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
To set the record straight, this board addressed this issue in two thousand eleven. That was when Mr. Holmes and I had our first disagreement. Thereafter, our solicitor and the solicitor of the zoning hearing board were supposed to confer. No changes occurred. Four years ago, the same thing occurred. So we are not talking about a situation where the zoning board has agreed or agreed to do anything until, I believe, it counted the votes from last week's work session. And I want to clarify a misperception that I may have even been. And I want to clarify a misperception that I may have even been part of in terms of why the Sunshine Act applies, and it doesn't have to do with an entity being a quasi-judicial body. According to the government, the Governor's Office for Local Development, the Sunshine Act broadly defines an agency to include the governing body and all committees authorized by the governing body to take official action or render advice on agency business, and all governing boards of political subdivisions, which would include the township, are covered by the Sunshine Act. And the Governor's Office specifically lists that the following is a sampling of the specific bodies and committees that have been determined to be agencies subject to the Sunshine Act by the Pennsylvania courts. The first item on the list, zoning hearing boards; the second, planning commissions. And then they provide court citations and statutory citations. So we're talking about the fact that these are agencies of the state, of the municipality. We're political subdivisions, and they are subject to the Zone... to the Sunshine Act for that reason alone.
Nobody's saying that they're not subject to the Sunshine Act, but they are complying to the Sunshine Act. The Sunshine Act does not require them to videotape. They have a court stenographer which takes... which is taking notes, the minutes of what's happening in that meeting. And they are available to the public. So the fact that it's not on the website, or whatever happened with that, which I understand is an administrative issue, is one thing, but they are not breaking the Sunshine law. And if they are, well, then we need to call them on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio.
I totally agree with what Commissioner Oliva and Commissioner Lewis said. Commissioner Siegel, you and I agree on a lot of things, but I certainly disagree with your handling of this. This really is filled with, I think, with a lot of anger and hatred towards the zoning board. You're painting a picture of the sort of Damocles falling, that something totally improper has been occurring with the zoning board, when these people are working independently of this board, trying to do a job that requires a lot of their time and expertise. And you know what? I totally agree with Mr. Lewis. I think you could have come to me, you could have talked to me. You and I talk a lot, and you and I agree on a lot of things. And I've... Sometimes we disagree. There's no doubt about it. But we could have handled this a hell of a lot better, and we cannot paint the picture that something is seriously wrong with the zoning board. That's just... it's unfair to the zoning board. As Mario said, there is a record. It's verbatim. It's available. And the fact that the board thought that some of their decisions were being posted is not their fault. We need to find out what happened, and why did it happen? And fix it.
Steve, we did... when this came up with the speakers that registered concerning the minutes, we had our zoning staff contact there. Mr. Malone is responsible. Mr. Lewis had a little bit wrong. I'm not responsible. The secretary's responsible for the minutes of our organization. Mr. Gentili is the secretary. Glory works for him. That's who does our minutes. They are a quasi-judicial board. They are responsible for their agenda and their minutes. And to public... Yeah, no. Mr. Malone is responsible to give them to our staff office for posting on the township website.
My understanding is that he has.
He should be doing that, and they are going back through 2016. Mrs. Scheck went to him today to find out where the copy of those minutes are that she did not have to post to the IT department for her zoning board. So it is being addressed. It was going there. I stand corrected on that.
How did you know that? How did you know that? Did you question that today?
We went... I went, when we had the registered speaker, I went and asked...
You asked Joan?
What the topic was. Pardon me?
You asked Joan?
Yes.
Today?
Today.
Mr. President?
Okay, because it's my understanding that they do post it. They do give it to Joan.
They do, but we're... The question was... Can I finish? The question was there were...
You had to talk, Bill. You guys did, and I was very patient, but go ahead.
I was answering the question. Of the 27 minutes, of the 27 meetings that were there, there were 20 agendas and notes of the meeting not published. So she went back to find out where they were. She said, "How far back do you want me to go?" I said, "At least till 2016 to find out the last two years of the agendas and the minutes of the meeting." There are stenographer records. If somebody wants the stenographer record, they would call the township office. There's a right to know. They'd have to pay for that. But the minutes are supposed to be posted. So we're just trying to find out where this... where the gap is between getting them from the board to the IT department through our zoning office.
Is this working? I agree with that, and I think that had... we could still have handled this a lot better, had our solicitor called Mr. Malone to find out what happened. If that's true, then we... the solicitor should have found... could have talked to him and to inquire as to what occurred, or why it wasn't occurring.
I think what Commissioner Wexler is saying is that the deficiency here is with the... is not with... is between the IT department and...
I get it. I get that. But I'm told about the overall handling of this. As I said, I agree with Mr. Lewis. There's this... the way we... we cannot paint a picture. This quasi-judicial board is doing something so improper that it's possibly hurting decisions or the way they operate. I mean, some of the comments made, I was actually stunned by them.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? Yeah, Mr. McCloskey.
Just to sort of follow up on how this conversation has taken a turn. There's been discussion of volunteers on the zoning board, and there is a certain degree of appreciation and respect that we should pay to volunteers on the zoning board. The reality is, Mr. Siegel has been raising this issue of televising, strictly televising the meetings since 2011. And by all accounts, that is true. So there's no secret on anybody of the zoning board that there was a desire by some on the board to televise the meeting, and there was a conscious decision made not to televise the meeting. Now, I... again, I did vote to table again to that motion, but the reason was there was a letter sent on Friday. And I'm willing to give everybody a chance, just as when somebody gives me a call and they say, you know, "Something happened 10 years ago." Well, this isn't 10 years ago. So we are now in 2018, and I'm going to accept that letter, and I'm going to hope to see something from the zoning board. But however you may disagree with how something was handled, let's not pretend that Commissioner Siegel was acting in a bubble in creating this, and that it would just be so simple for him to go to the zoning board and request this. It was no secret that Mr. Siegel wanted these meetings televised. So... and you have been on the board as well for that entire time. So it's not...
And I've agreed with him. Haven't I? Haven't I? I've agreed that it should be televised. Day one.
Excuse me. You could have also gone to the board and asked. I mean, so it's... let's not just start pointing the fingers at everybody. This is something we all want. We want these meetings televised, okay? And I think it's been abundantly clear to anybody that's watching this, and hopefully to any members who are volunteers of the zoning board, that the meetings need to be televised with all due haste. And I would expect that to happen.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oliva.
I would actually take this one step further and say that we should televise all of our boards. Think... when I look at... I look at other... this is just my opinion. You talk about transparency. I look at other cable government channels, and their parks board is televised, other committee boards are televised, the police committee was televised. I mean, why not? And the issue of transparency? Televise all of them.
Absolutely. I don't have any problem with that, Mr. President.
Well, then, what I think is we should give Mr. Gentili an opportunity to look at the cost of televising all these things, rather than us voting on something we don't even know the cost of right now.
What a terrific... Bravo on that. May I, Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes, real quickly.
Look, I didn't write this resolution, but I supported it, and I still support it. But I got a real problem with somebody suggesting we're trying to jam something down the throats of the zoning board. So let me read aloud to the public what this resolution says, and then I'll ask for a show of hands as to how many people out here in the audience actually think we're jamming anything down anybody's throat. Whereas, "The Board of Commissioners desires to provide residents with the opportunity to observe as many meetings of its boards and commissions as possible. And whereas, 'The Board of Commissioners recognizes that residents have an interest in the proceedings of the zoning hearing board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Havaford Township authorizes the township manager to take all steps necessary to record the meetings of the Havaford Township zoning hearing board for rebroadcast on Havaford Township cable channels in a fiscally responsible manner, resolved today, 2018.'" Now, please, does anybody out there think that we're jamming anything down anybody's throats, or disrespecting volunteers of the township?
The fact is, Mr. Holmes, there was a decision...
I appreciate... I appreciate no hands in the audience. Thank you. I know how some of my board members feel, but thank you all.
Mr. Lewis?
The fact is, Mr. Holmes, last week, our own solicitor said that he felt that it was an overreach on the part of our board to force any decision as it relates to procedures with the zoning hearing board.
Do you want to call that tape up on that screen right now, and I could see Jim Byrne tell us that was an overreach?
Let me... let's...
He said basically it was not within our authority...
You want to show me the minutes and the seconds when that happened?
It was not in our authority to do that.
It's on TV.
All right, let me just...
Send me the minute and second when our solicitor told us that that was overreached.
I just want to go back. We talked about not knowing what the board meant. Steve, you're the liaison to this. We've been talking to the zoning board for less than... But in the last three to four years, one of the questions that all the interviewees that have been appointed to the zoning board has been asked about their feelings about televising the meetings. So they... most of the board is aware that that's been a goal of the Board of Commissioners for at least the last four to six years, because all the interviews were asked what their feelings were on that, both in the Planning Commission and the zoning board. I think Mr. McGargy was pretty adamant about televising his last interview when he was reappointed. So I think... I think the zoning board... I don't think we jammed anything down anything. I think we're getting into semantics, and the hour's getting late. We're all getting a little testy, so I...
I'd like to hear his opinion, what Mr. Byrne has to say.
We are not getting an opinion in the public from Mr. Byrne to this board.
He gave us an opinion last week.
He did not.
Yes, he did.
Wait a minute. Let him say it.
He did. Mr. Byrne is not going to give us advice in public. If he wants to go to executive session and tell us what his advice is, he can do that. But our solicitor doesn't advise us in front of the public. He is the board's lawyer, and his advice is private.
So you don't want to in the interest of transparency?
Oh, good Lord, Andy. Now are we going to say there's no attorney-client privilege because we're having a silly fight over this resolution? Is that what you want to say?
I'm just saying, Mr. Byrne gave us... Read from the municipal code last week.
He did.
He read from the code, and I interpret... I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know.
I think at this point, the discussion has gone around. I'd like to call for a vote at this time.
Please do.
Mr. Gentili, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Reluctantly, yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. So what was all that discussion about? Item number 18, Resolution 2097, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2097 of 2018 approving that the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the Department of Havaford have agreed to use the Department of Transportation grants online reporting system to file the required liquid fuel forms annually, including but not limited to the MS 965, the MS 329, and the MS 999 forms, and that the legislative body of this municipality, which is us, enters into and agrees to the requirements and obligations of the online reporting program, and that the legislative body, us, hereby designates the following persons and officers holding the following title positions: President William Wexler and Township Manager Lawrence Gentili.
Second?
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Oliva. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
19, contract awards.
Motion to award the walkway improvements contract between Darby Road and South Ardmore Lot to J&amp;J Concrete and Paving, Havertown, PA, in a base bid amount of $29,712.50, and bid alternates of $20,622.60, for a total of $50,335, submitting the lowest responsible bid to paid with CDBG grant funds.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Matt doesn't head up, but...
This is the walkway that goes between Lizette and...
Lizelle's.
Lizelle. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Right in Oakmont South, where there's a walkway that goes into the Oakmont South parking lot, which is between Wagner's and... what did you say, Lizelle?
Lizelle's.
Lizelle's. So the... so we're beautifying that walkway. It's something that the HPD has wanted to do for a while, and we were able to, through CDBG funds, to do it.
This will also be in addition to other things we've discussed over the last couple of months in terms of trying to come up with creative parking solutions for the business district right there along Darby Road, and other plans we've had for that lot in the back. So this is part of... this is the first part of a step of money that we already had through various grants that Mr. Gentili was able to get. And, you know, it's... as I said a couple of months ago regarding parking in that area, it's not going to solve the problem, but we're going to keep doing everything we can to make it a little bit better and a little bit better. And, you know, hopefully, it becomes a situation that's palpable to the residents, but also good for our business district, and eventually, good for the whole township. So this is... I would encourage all of my colleagues to vote yes for this.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey.
This is phase one of many things that are happening there.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Mr. McCloskey, work hard on that. I vote yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 20, is it continuation of the citizens' forum for non-agenda items? Is there any member of the public here that would like to address the board on any, any topic?
Is there any member of the public who regrets coming here tonight?
You, you regret coming or you want to come up and speak?
Why, if you show a hand, yeah.
You want to come up?
May I speak?
Yeah, you have to come to up and.
Okay, I just want to, I had my time, so.
That's okay, ma'am, you want to come up?
Need my name and address?
Please.
My name is Nicole MacLean, M-A-C-L-E-A-N, 225 Ivy Rock Lane. I just wanted to thank, Ivy Rock Lane.
Yeah.
Mr. Steve's.
I just wanted to thank everybody for the recent improvements at the dog park with the handicap parking. Tim, it looks awesome. We are so happy. This is just part of the initial getting at ADA, yeah, that thing. I'm nervous. But I just wanted to thank you all for that. It, it is a definite improvement and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Anybody else?
Regina Feifer, 11 East Langhorn Avenue. I, I'm disturbed by how the discussion went down tonight somewhat, but I am most more disturbed by the letter that the zoning board sent to this board. And I find it disingenuous. I find it stonewalling. And I, it is not new that the behavior of the zoning hearing board members has been criticized and deserved criticism. I have raised the issues over the years based on the Walgreens thing that many of us packed rooms went through over this, so much so that I came before this board and asked the board not to reappoint the chair. The board did it anyway, but I find serious problems with the behaviors of some of the people on the board. I look at that letter and I look at, there are some legitimate issues, but everything, personal medical history information, all right, these things are already on record. They're on transcripts. The meetings are public. But when I look back, I invite you to go back and read those transcripts from those Walgreen meetings, and you will look at the chair who repeatedly adjourned the meeting in a punitive manner to punish the crowd. Now, I don't find that professional, and I don't believe this board should take instructions from the zoning hearing board. I think that's ridiculous. It's your responsibility for policy planning and review in this town, and I expect you to do it and not to take instruction from anything else. Fair is fair. I think there perhaps may be some reasonable issues, but there are legitimate concerns with the behavior of the zoning hearing board over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feifer. Anyone else who should address the board? That concludes it. Thank you for your comments. I'm not going to go into a discussion on that. You're, you've rendered your opinion and that's fine. New business. And does any commissioner have any new business?
Not for us to act tonight, but I did want to readdress an issue that had been raised by one of our citizens, one of our, our groups about the township divesting its investments in any companies that are in the arms industry. And that is a request that has been sent to our, the people who manage our township funds. And I have not received back, and it may be my fault for not being diligent enough, you know, what the cost is, basically what the, what the efforts are to undertake to do that. And so if I can use this moment right now to, to ask our township, our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director to meet again or to call again our managers and ask them, because surely we're not the only people asking this, about what the mechanics and what the potential cost is to us to scrub our investments from any companies that are in the, that are in the arms manufacturing sector.
If I may, they did, one of, one of the investment managers that we asked specifically did respond back, not with any specifics, and I will ask and probe a little further, but they did just want to reassure us that there was a very, very minimal exposure with one fund, I believe. But I will revisit it with them and see about eliminating that altogether.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Any other new business? Other business. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes. I want to thank the Westgate Hills Civic Association for their continued efforts as it relates to the trail that we are trying to develop there in Westgate Hills. And recently, the leadership of the Civic sent Mr. Gentili a list, a punch list of issues or requests if they, for improvement, if they, if township can help. And I think, Larry, you said you forwarded that to Tim. Tim, you received that today?
I did, yes.
Good. Anything you could do, we'd certainly appreciate it. Maybe if we could even have a follow-up meeting with the Civic Association, that would be great. I'm glad we passed the volunteer firefighter tax credit. I know that all of our volunteer firefighters were grateful, wish we could do more. We should look into doing more for them as they are very dedicated, as we exhibited this past weekend with Pioneer and their 100-year anniversary. Congratulated them and thanked, thanked them for inviting me to their celebration. It was very, very nice, nice family affair. Finally, and as it relates to the zoning board, I, when Mr. Siegel and Mr. Holmes disagreed four years ago, I was the one that agreed with Mr. Holmes that the zoning board should televise their meetings. I do understand, I did understand the concerns that Mr. Holmes raised back then, and I understand the concerns that the zoning hearing board made. But I stand by my statement, and I agree with Mr. Lewis again, that the handling of this was, was very, very bad. Had Mr. Siegel, as me being the chair of the zoning committee, if you had come to me, I think you know me, I would have talked to them again. I could have set up a meeting with our committee and we could have addressed this. And I don't think any of this would have went down this evening the way it did. There's not a time that I have not taken your call or we've talked about going to a meeting or sharing, I've called you to share a meeting with me when something that we both felt was very important to our residents. And this is very important to our residents. And I'm a little disappointed that you didn't reach out to me. And had you done that, I think you know me, I would have said, sure, sure, Commissioner, sure, Dan, I'll set up that meeting. And, you know, could have been a totally different outcome, and we probably wouldn't have had the discussions that we've had today. So I wish in the future that we continue our working relationship and you talk to me about any issue that I could help out with. If it relates to the entire township or both our wards, I'm willing to do that. Finally, I disagree with the way Mr. Kane was portrayed. He, I believe, having televised this meeting, I think the public in this board will see just how qualified he is to run those meetings and how organized and proper things are. The way he handles it is just unbelievable. I think you'll see his talent really shine when these meetings are broadcast. And that's really one of the reasons why I thought it should be as well as transparency. And I still ask that the remainder boards, no matter what they are, we should look into televising those boards as other townships have done. And, and, you know, we talk about transparency. Well, you know what? People can't always make it to the Parks Board. People can't always make it to other committees. It would be nice to have that. Now, there is a cost associated with that. I agree. I wish we wouldn't have voted for the Planning Commission one. I did because I, I believe it, believe in it. But I wish that, that we had given Mr. Gentili an opportunity to look at all these expenses and come back to us and tell us exactly what the cost would be, because I'm sure there's, there's going to be a cost. I don't, hopefully it's minimal, but Larry, you would know more, more than I on this.
The cost will not be minimal to do every board and commission. And there's one other thing that we, you need to be conscious of is the more meetings that you record, there's only so much time on the cable access channel to broadcast these. So certain things will not get, it will become a, a pretty much continuous.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I've looked at Lower Marion especially, and they're broadcasting many of their meetings. So I, I don't, maybe we can look into how they're doing it and.
Certainly do some research there.
And do some research, right. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Mr. Oliva?
Okay, I just wanted to remind everyone that the HPD Business Breakfast is, is going to be located Wednesday, right out here, June 13th, right in our lobby here, from 8:00 to 9:30. It allows business, members of the business community to network, along with township officials and along with the public, to come in and join us. So anybody can come and please join us in, in meeting the local business owners who are trying to make a better Havertown. As for the Shade Tree Commission, which they've left already, but thank you. I wanted to thank the Shade Tree Commission as a member of Tree Tenders. I've been working with Gene now for about 11 years on, on the Tree Tender Program. We have planted, we had planned to plant, plant 1,000 trees in 10 years in the township, and we, we have exceeded that goal. We're around 1,100 now. But the time has come to accelerate that. We're losing a lot more trees than, than we were. We've had some, you know, PICO cutting down some mature trees, as well as, you know, just, we're an old community. We're getting to the, to that 75-year, 80-years where those big trees that were planted are, are now starting to die. So we're, we're needing to plant those trees in a much, much more accelerated fashion.
Ma'am, what kind of trees are they planting now? Do you know?
It depends on, again, it depends on the, what we look for is location. So if we're under wires, we're going to plant a tree that's lower, maybe something flowering. If we're, you know, the, the sky's the limit, then we want to put the largest tree we can, depending on the neighborhood we're in.
Beautiful. That's great.
So that's what, that's what Tree Tenders is doing. But we, I, I again ask that we increase the budget for shade trees so that we can start planting more trees. We have 100 planned for this year, but, you know, 200 trees would be a lot better than, than 100 for, obviously. And just to chime in on the zoning hearing board issue, which I have a difference of opinion on, I do not, I am going to give any board of volunteers the benefit of the doubt if it's going to take a month. Next month, if we don't have a confirmation from them that they are, have passed something to, to video their meetings, I will be voting for this resol, for the resolution that, that was tabled. So I'm not against, and I know that Commissioner Siegel takes it to heart about videotaping and about being open. We just have to be a little careful, and I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I'm not, not a guy who, who likes to step on people's toes. So the easiest way that we can, that we can get this over with and not have hard feelings between the boards who are volunteer boards, then I'll give them a month to make that decision and, and to do it. But I do agree with Commissioner Siegel and the fact that these things need to be televised. The zoning hearing board needs to be televised, and so does, I don't believe that all boards, because people are not, people don't, you know, they're, they're not interested in some of the boards that we have. Most of the time, there's no public comment on most of these boards. So whatever people may be interested in, we may want, you know, to do those boards, a few of them. I wouldn't recommend all of them, and you can get minutes from any of the, of the ones if you're, if you're interested in. So with that, I, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva. Mr. McCloskey?
The second of the Parks and Recreation Summer Running Series will be on June 27th. It's a 5K that runs through the Trails Behind the Crack. They had a good crowd last month, and it is a nice event. So if you can make it. And then the third, the third will be the last Wednesday in July. Again, this is a pretty nice event. It's on Wednesday nights, 7 o'clock. Get yourself out and moving in the summer and take advantage of some of our Trails Behind the Crack. Couple other things that are just sort of third ward specific. The Ardmore Avenue Bridge construction is, we should have some firm dates on it soon. We'll, we'll hope to have a meeting date where we can have PennDOT representatives. We'll have it in this building sometime in August, as soon as I have those date coordinated with the construction company and PennDOT officials. I'll certainly pass that on to the public. A question I did receive from more than one person, and so I'll just answer it here because we're in public and it's part of the benefit. When they do close the bridge, the parking lot for the Septa Train Station will remain open, and there'll be a temporary pedestrian bridge built across the tracks so that both the people in Ardmore on, on that side of Haverford Avenue will still have access to the side going into the city, and the people in the Marion Gulf Manor and Merwood Park section will still have access to the side that goes to Norristown. So that will remain open even through the construction while the bridge is being repaired. And it is, you know, I, I got off at that stop coming home from work the other day, and the, these infrastructure improvements are annoying and they're a hassle to our daily lives. But if you get off on the direction towards Norristown and walk up the steps to sort of cross the other way, and you look at that bridge, I think it's beneficial that we're getting it fixed. So I'll leave it at that. But we'll have a meeting sometime in August, and we can get all the questions answered from PennDOT and, and their crew. And then briefly, PICO continues their, their gas line work down Eagle Road for the third straight summer. But thankfully, there doesn't need to be a lot of tie-ins to the cemetery area there by St. Dennis, so this project is supposed to go quicker. There were some concerns last week in terms of the detour routes and the traffic being pushed into Campbell Avenue or Cherry Lane. Myself and the police had conversations with the project manager today and the representative from PICO. And there's going to be some additional signage, put it in front of the Wawa. The detour route is supposed to send people when, as you're traveling in that direction towards Haverford Avenue. At the Wawa Darby, you're supposed to turn right and go to Brookline, down to Arlington, and back. You're not supposed to go all the way to where the construction starts, and we're going to do everything we can over the next couple of weeks to try to divert people to follow the actual detour. It's not to mean no cars are going to go on those roads, but we, we did have that discussion today and made them aware. And the police are going to have a car on both sides of the construction project in order to assist that. So, and hopefully the project moves along with all due haste. And that's all I'm going to have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First, I am sponsoring in conjunction with Direct Paint and Collision at their property on June 23rd, a secure paper shredding event. This will be from 9:00 AM to noon. Anyone can come with their car, up to four boxes of materials, of paper and, and/or in paper clips. It will be securely shredded at the site. It is free to anyone who is interested, so feel free to come. This is Saturday, June 23rd, from 9:00 to noon. And then from noon on, you can go over to Minowa Shopping Center for the Irish Festival. I don't have the dates yet of the July 4 celebrations in Paddock Park or Linwood, but we'll put them on my newsletter. I apologize, I listed a July work session, and Ms. Cugini corrected me that we do not have a work session in July. And as with everyone else, I do want to touch on the zoning board discussion, not necessarily the way others have at this point. More to, two points. One, one of the things that I pride myself on, and I think shows with Mr. Holmes and me, is that we can disagree, but whatever a commissioner's vote is, that's their vote. I don't take it personally or hold anything against anyone for their views. I don't expect everyone to agree with me or vice versa. However, I have been raising the issue of the zoning board since I first joined this board, which will be nine and a half, almost 10 years ago. And there hasn't been movement. And with all due respect, you've chaired the zoning committee since 2012, and we've been talking about this, and nothing's happened. And when nothing happens, my inclination is I'm going to move forward and push. I said nothing about any member of the zoning board or any of their actions. I cited the statistics that for however anyone wants to interpret them, that is your prerogative. And you can, you know, if we have the minutes and we see the meetings, then we can see how they conduct their meetings, if they are appropriate, if they aren't. But that's the advantage of televised meetings. The public sees us. I'm always amazed at how many residents talk about seeing these meetings. And that's an opportunity for them to gauge not only us, the zoning board, the Planning Commission, but the others who also serve us, whether it's the police chief, the deputy police chief. They are an opportunity for residents to understand how the township operates and who is the person or person, who are the persons responsible. And I view it as essential function of government to do that. Abington Township televises every committee meeting, and while many of our meetings probably aren't interesting, Abington does it, and that's for residents to decide. I think the best problem we could ever have is that we have too much material for the cable channel. I chair the cable committee, and we're always discussing what needs to be put on. And the best problem that this township could have is we have too much material. With that, I wish everyone a happy and festive July 4th holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thanks. We don't have a work session, so the, so between now and our next meeting is going to be July 4th. Now, the people in Harrisburg foolishly allowed much higher, stronger grade fireworks this year in Pennsylvania. So I just encourage everybody, like I said in March when we had the big storms, if you never held a chainsaw in your life before, March 4th wasn't the day to pick one up and start taking trees apart. And this July 4th isn't the day to go get 500-gram rockets and start shooting them in your backyard. So I just ask everybody, in particular this year, because I think there's going to be a lot more ordinance out there than there has been in the past, to please be careful on July 4th and, and not do anything foolish. And to enjoy our local neighborhood July 4th events that go on. And the sixth ward, the South Armor Veteran Alliance, has put on, as long as I've lived in Ardmore, a really, really wonderful daytime event for the kids and for the adults, that starts at 10:00 in the morning with a parade and goes into the early afternoon at Elwell. And it's a really terrific event. And years ago, I, I remember fielding some criticism as why don't we don't have a township-wide event, or maybe have fireworks at one particular location. And I think the answer is that our individual neighborhood events that go on are really what set apart, I think, Haverford Township from a lot of other towns. It's been a real treat, living in Ardmore, to be part of Saba. And so I encourage everybody in my neighborhood to be part of that this year, but certainly encourage everybody, make a point this year of participating in your own neighborhood event, and please be careful out there. I don't have anything to say more about the zoning board. The Tree of Liberty has to be, you know, watered with the blood of a few patriots every now and then, I think. You know, we ought to just every once in a while have a good, strong disagreement among each other, just to remind folks here that we are nine individuals with different views, who were all elected to bring different views and different ideas to the board and discuss them, you know, discuss them fully, and perhaps even discuss them strongly with one another. But at the end of the day, do our jobs and do everything that we think that we should do. And, and one last thought, and it's very recent. There's a, there's a tragedy in, in Haverford this weekend affecting a family. And I won't go any more into it, other than to just ask everybody to remember, as we, as currently as we discuss. into it, other than to just ask everybody to remember, as we, as currently as we discussed, as we're dealing with the opioid crisis, and we're dealing with things that, we're dealing with school shootings and everything, I don't want it to be lost. The child and youth depression remains such a terrible, terrible epidemic in this, in this country. And that while we spend a lot of energy now worrying about the safety of our kids at school, while we're worried and addressing with pharmaceutical companies and all that, the issues of opioids, I ask us to all take a step back and just remember the stress that our, that our youth are under today and to pay careful attention to those families who have to deal with children who are depressed or are dealing with issues, and to reach out to those folks. Because when you're dealing with a child who has, who is, who is ill and is perhaps mentally ill, that can be the loneliest place on earth for that family. So pay attention to those neighbors and to those children, and just as a special intention to me, at my request, not for me, but just keep, keep some people in your prayers this week. That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Lewis.
Yes, thank you. Just one item. I'm sure most of you probably already know this, but the College Avenue Bridge is finally open after, I think it's behind schedule, but it is open. It's not fully complete. They're still working on staining the sides of the bridge, and they'll be doing, you can see if you're there, they're doing some work, construction work adding, but turn lane, if you're coming from Hereford College or College Avenue, they're adding a turn lane. And then they'll be adding an adaptive traffic signal at some point. So it's probably another six weeks or so before they'll be really finished. So I hope we don't go through the same issues that we went with the Ardmore Avenue Bridge. I'll be working with Commissioner McCloskey on that, because that's potentially considerably more disruptive than the closure of the College Avenue Bridge. That's going to be an 18-month project at least, if not two years. So it's hard to believe, but that's what it takes, government at work. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. McGary.
Yes, number one, I, wait a minute, here we are. Okay, yes. Number one, Nancy, our health director, was going to be here tonight, Nancy Guerrero, but she had another commitment, so she couldn't make it. This all has to do with the residents on the 400 block of Oxon Road, several of them got stung because of the beekeeper putting bees in the wrong place. But we'll get that straightened out. But we're trying to pass some ordinances in the township where somebody's got to be responsible for these things. Although there is a lot of others around the township where there's no problems at all, but this particular place caused a problem with at least eight neighbors. The second thing is basically, my wife Fran was elected the president of The Grange, so congratulations, Fran. I guess that makes me first something or other, you know.
You're the first husband of The Grange. Congratulations, Jimmy.
But what Fran says goes, and that's the way it is with me, so. But other than that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGary. Dr. Hart.
Just a few things. Arlington Road, I had said that it was going to be paved last week, and obviously it wasn't. PennDOT apparently had a delay on another job. They've assured us that it should be done in the near future, which sounds like about a week or two. Should take much shorter time than the College Avenue Bridge, hopefully. The Penn Dale Civic Association will be sponsoring a 4th of July celebration at The Grange. I don't have all the details on the dates, but usually it's a fun day. There's a bike parade for the kids, there's fire truck rides and a lot of activities. And then finally, I've had a number of residents ask me why I don't send out email updates on issues and activities in the township. As my predecessor did, I do send them out. Unfortunately, if you don't request them, if I don't have your email address, I can't send it to you. I didn't get a copy of people's email addresses. So if you just email me at ghart@herefordtownship.org, I'd be happy to put you on the list. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. I have three quick thank yous. One, a special kudos to our Public Works Department. Through those that live in the ninth ward, we've always had a parking problem at Steel Field, and we built the curb up so cars couldn't go up in the grass and we'd have a safe crossing for our children to go there. But we neglected to put, we didn't realize that we had some handicapped people that lived in the neighborhood, so we suggested that we put a cutout there so a wheelchair could access the seven, the eight or nine-inch curb that we put up there. And our Public Works was told about it, and within four days, it was completed. So now there's wheelchair access there. And if any Eagle Scouts looking for a project, please see me. We have one at Steel Field that we want to get done, which would be a handicap access down to the field on the hill or steps. So if anybody's looking for an Eagle Scout project, please contact me. Second thank you is to the Hilltop Civic Association, and specifically, Ms. Debbie Sapola. She put together a night where the, after the Civic Association meeting and my presentation, Representative Santor and I, probably about 40 people came and built blessing bags. When we talk about, a group called Angels in Motion was there to present what they do. Angels in Motion, for the don't know, was a woman Carol Roester saw that, she was out searching for her child who had an addiction. She was roaming the streets of Kensington, looking for her son. And she began, she saw that with many other children, loved ones that were there suffering as well. So she began to open up her heart to people by putting together what she called blessing bags. Her son's favorite treat was a pop tart. So every bag includes at least one pop tart, among many other items. And by putting that out, Mrs. Sapola did a grassroots effort. People went to BJ's, got all sorts of stuff. Forty people showed up, and they put out over 450 bags that night. They have more material left over. They're getting together again this week, hopefully put another 200 bags together. So I thank her and the Civic Association for sponsoring that. And if you're interested in Angels in Motion, their website is AIM, A-I-M, angelsinmotion.org. They're a great group. It's purely a grassroots organization to help people that are on the streets, so that's the other thank you. The third was to the Pioneer Fire Company, celebrated their 100th anniversary this Saturday with a community day. They fed the neighborhood. All the other five fire companies were there. And then the Civic Association, on July 4th, starting around 9:30 for registration, is the annual bike parade. Somebody alluded to the neighborhood fun things. As Tim Denny knows, he's in that neighborhood, it's been going on for, as long as I can remember, on July 4th, bike parade down to Hilltop Field, foot races, water ice, ice cream, all the good things about what our country is, and a few senior veterans that show up, and we show our gratitude to them, and we sing the National Anthem, and we just have, we start off our day as a real small-town hometown hero type of celebration to celebrate our country's independence. And that's all I have. At this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I would see you adjourn.
So we're adjourned. Thank you.